Acknowledgement, recognition and acknowledgement. Yes, musical performance, a collection of Dearborn musicians.
Good evening. Last March, when the schools went 100% online, our music teachers were scrambling to come up with ways that would allow our students to still have an ensemble experience, even though they were alone in their homes. Many began experimenting with software that allowed for a virtual choir or an instrumental music ensemble. Kevin Dewey, the vocal music director and interim instrumental music director at Henry Ford College, decided that his ensembles were still going to perform and have concerts. He spent numerous hours learning software and editing techniques to create high-quality performances. Our high schools and Henry Ford College Music Department has had a long-term partnership. Each year, an ensemble from Henry Ford College visits our high schools, works with our students, and performs for them. The intent is to let our students know that there are still music-performing opportunities in our community once they graduate from high school. This year, Kevin and I began talking about what that was going to look like. We ended up coming up with a combined project between our high school vocal and instrumental students and the students at Henry Ford College. We met with the directors and presented the idea, and it took off. We even made a staff demo project where our staff sang and played their instruments as a model for the students. I believe that you were able to see that a few weeks ago. The performance that you will see tonight is made up of over 100 students and over 200 submitted recordings. We named the project "Why Dearborn Sings", and the song that they are performing is "Why We Sing", by Greg Gilpin. Sit back and enjoy the "Why Dearborn Sings" project. Why we sing?
So, why I sing is because...
It helps me release my emotions.
It puts you in the writer's shoes.
Does it annoy my siblings?
Because it feels good.
Usually when I'm worried or stressed about something, I just sing a lot or listen to music, and that helps me calm down.
It's something very fun, and it's something I enjoy to do.
I sing because it's a great way to express my emotion, and it sounds nice.
I sing because singing is therapeutic.
And it's a way for me to express my thoughts.
So, I sing because it helps me feel better.
Singing is like oxygen.
I just grew up around music and just seen my whole life.
I play because it gives me a way to express my thoughts and feelings.
The reason why I sing is because I love to spread joy and happiness.
Sing because singing with people brings me joy.
Because singing makes me feel very happy and very joyful.
I sing because singing is a form of art.
Because singing is a nice break.
I sing because it helps me express myself.
Because it helps me to connect with other people.
Connect with the world around us.
Makes me really happy, also makes me feel really free.
Makes me happy, and it relieves my stress.
No, it releases my stress, you know.
I sing to bring joy to other people's lives as well as mine.
And to express myself.
One day, I hope to be, you know, honest with music.
Singing with others is very fun.
Whenever I sing, it inspires me.
But also, I feel like it's just nice. Like, it's just like a little distraction for myself, and it's fun.
I sing because it brings me joy in my life, and it's something that I can share with others.
My name is Nargis.
I like to sing.
I sing.
I play.
I sing because...
I sing.
And I like to sing because...
I sing because...
I like to sing.
My name is Nargis, and I sing because it makes me happy.
Thank you for letting me share this powerful performance with you tonight. In a time that crowds are discouraged and social distancing and masks are the norm, being able to create a performance like this is so therapeutic. Even in times when singing and playing instruments together is compromised, our students gravitated towards creating this musical expression. Thank you for being a Board of Education that supports the arts and recognizes the importance that music can play in the lives of our students.
And a big thank you to Ms. Meyer from the P-12 side, for Mr. Kevin Dewey on the college side, for all the teachers that made this possible. It is refreshing to see our students and hear our students singing. It is refreshing to see their works of art. And God knows, we need refreshing in this time. So, next item, please.
Absolutely. Food service appreciation.
We're going to ask Mr. Bain and Mr. Murphy to come up. And I believe we have some staff who are here. We've talked about this before, but we have over 100,000 meals we've been giving out to the community during the pandemic, and they've just been doing an outstanding job. So, in order to show appreciation and recognize our food service staff, we are sending to all staff certificates, which I have four here. Because of COVID, we knew we couldn't bring in everyone. You know, otherwise, I think we'd have this boardroom packed in in a non-COVID time, because they really have done an outstanding job, and I've seen it firsthand. So, we did bring some representatives, and I know, I think we had two of them that were coming in. Some of them were on the retirement schedule as well today, I know, Mr. Murphy. So, I'll let you say a few comments, and then I have some certificates here.
Good evening, President Thorpe, Dr. Malako, trustees. As you all know, a month ago, not a month ago, a year ago, we closed the schools down, but our staff never stopped serving meals. From the time that we closed down until just recently, we've serviced over or just under 4 million meals to our community. I just think that is an outstanding number. I've talked to some of my colleagues in other districts, including Detroit, and we are far and above more than those districts. But I just can't express how proud I am of our department. And I just, like Dr. Malako said, I couldn't invite everyone, although I would love to. But I did bring Josh Bain, Lee Collins from SFE, as well as a few of our managers. I'd like them to be able, I'd like for you to meet them and let them introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Rolazuni. I'm from Makala-Yunes. And I want to say thank you for all of you, and thank you for all the staff I work with him. Thank you so much.
I am Noah Benian, manager at Lori School. Thank you, all of you, and thank you, Josh. They appreciated everything they do for us. Thank you.
My name is Beth Isaacs. I am the manager at O.L. Smith School. I was hired in the district in 1976. I am one of the retirees this year.
It was fun.
And I just want to thank Dr. Malako and the board for keeping us employed and allowing us to do what we do best.
So, once again, I would like to thank all of you. I know we've had many volunteers help us out through all this. Many administrators helped us, and I know I've seen some of the board members out helping. And it's really, in such a downtime, just watching our staff interact with the community has really been uplifting. So, appreciate it. Thanks.
Trustee Watts.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you, because I think without you, many families would not have the food security. And because you have dedicated your time probably from your families, you have made whole other families. So, thank you so much.
Trustee McDonald.
Just piggybacking off of what trustee Watts said, again, I thank everyone. And what a point of pride it is for us as a district, not only to feed those in our community that need it, but we went beyond our community in several communities away and didn't turn anyone away. If there was a need, we made sure that they were fed. So, thank you, and that just warms my heart. I think it's an amazing point of pride for us in the entire district. Thank you for your hard work and your dedication to our students and their health.
Thank you. Next item, please. [Music] Next item, please.
Commendations.
Nice to be here in person to see all of you and able to read these in person. I will have to say that, you know, I go back and check the video feed during the meetings, and I went back to check our Facebook feed during the musical performance. Never have I ever, ever seen so many little heart emojis coming flying on the screen during that presentation, during that video. So, another great reason why people should be living and going to school here in Dearborn because of that partnership with Henry Ford College. I'm not telling you guys anything. I'm just doing my job and promoting the district a little bit here. Okay, so commendations. Our first commendations goes to Hilda Ironi, Instructional Coach for School Improvement and the Dearborn Teacher University. Ms. Ironi was recently asked to serve on a team that will assist the Michigan Department of Education by running a four-part series on the Michigan Integrated Continuous Improvement Process. Ms. Ironi is an outstanding coach and leader who supports newly hired professional staff and supports school improvement efforts in the district. The high school level. Commendations to Etzel Ford High School Athletic Director, Robert Picano, who reached 20 years of service as an athletic director. Mr. Picano was recently recognized by the Michigan Interscholastic Athletic Administration Association for his service. Commendations to Etzel Ford High School Boys Basketball Coach, Abraham Baydoun. Mr. Baydoun achieved his 300th career victory on March 16. Commendations to Mona Berry and Lisa Esparzo-Sadaki at Dearborn High. A parent wrote praising the pair for helping and encouraging her daughter to prepare for the SAT and apply for college. The teen was accepted at three colleges, and the parent wrote, "I cannot stress that in the time of this pandemic, they were both a shining light and made the process as smooth as sailing." Commendations to Dearborn High Senior Aya Hamod. She was recently notified that she was one of 575 semifinalists from across the country who will receive a National Honor Society Scholarship worth $3,200. Congratulations to Dearborn High School Girls Varsity Basketball Team, who won their second consecutive MHSAA District Championship on March 26, and advanced to the MHSAA Regional Final in Division 1, which is the Sweet 16. This is the first time in 17 years. The team is coached by Eric Quinn and Adam Tolasas. Congratulations to DHS Senior Fidel Shami, who qualified for the MHSAA Division 1 Boy Swimming State Finals, which were held on March 27 at Hudsonville High School. Fidel finished 20th in the state in the 100 breaststroke swimming, a lifetime best of 1 minute, .97 seconds. Dearborn High is coached by Kayla Pap and Dean Kendall. And those are the commendations for this one. Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
I'm sorry, trustee Berry, you had your hand up, I didn't see.
So, I just wanted to add that we had about eight wrestlers make the state finals. And Joey Morano, a junior at Etzel Ford, placed fourth. Way to represent Joey. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Berry. Appreciate the assist there on that one.
You got it.
We don't get, we see, we try to collect as many as we can. Donations. A donation of $2,000 has been offered to McDonald Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for the Empower Program. A donation of $5,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used to assist our immigrant families with food and housing. A donation of $500 has been offered to Deval Elementary School, Bryant Middle School, and Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation for being this year's Mardi Gras de Bloom Contest winners. A donation of 30 cases of disinfecting wipes, always comes in handy, has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by LAHC to be used throughout the district. A donation of $100 has been offered to Smith Middle School by Saja Hassan to be used for lawn greeting signs for students on their first day. They were, those signs were out there obviously already and looked great. A donation of $300 has been offered to Smith Middle School by Robert and Leslie Burnett in memory of former Smith student Devon Schultz to purchase a set of drums with a stand. And a donation of a Yamaha electric keyboard and a Yamaha clarinet has been offered to Dearborn High School by Larry Hicks to be loaned to students as needed. And those are our donations. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of minutes. Approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting, regular P-12 meeting, March 8, 2021. Board Report 20-77. Recommended action: Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
Still moved?
Support. We had a motion by trustee McDonald, support by trustee Berry. Any corrections? All right. Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next item, please.
Special reports. Equity Education Initiative. Dr. Glenn Malako, Ms. Rose Aldubeli, Mr. Mike Assale.
Okay, so we wanted to get started and just kind of bring this to the board, our Equity Education Initiative, which is, you know, we talk about equity and diversity and things in the district. And it really started under my time as, you know, it happened prior to me becoming superintendent. But one of the things that I wanted to see was really an implementation that would hit administrators and then eventually go down to the staff to get to the students. And so, I'll let Ms. Aldubeli talk about the... It was direction from the Michigan Department of Education, but they passed a resolution last year. We started this planned program, I would just call it a program, but a model back in 2015 and 16, and it's aligned with our strategic plan. And it does have a rollout here. It kind of gets into the information with training that we provided to administrators and other things that we've done for cultural proficiency. And it also involved visits to specific sites. This was pre-COVID, though. So, obviously, we had to change some things, and I'll let you go on to the next slide. And here are just some examples. The Henry Ford College, the Arab American Museum. These are actually meetings that we held with all of our administrators. We went onsite to learn about different aspects within the community. And then we would get speakers from the different locations. And we had plans pre-COVID to go to many more sites. So, we unfortunately had to put a halt on that. But we had the Arab American Museum, as I mentioned. We went to the Dearborn Presbyterian Church. We had the Islamic Institute of Knowledge. We also planned to go to a Catholic church, and then we were looking at going to another mosque, and we had other locations. We've brought in different speakers. Amr Zar and trustee McDonald, you're the one who initially got me in contact several years ago. I don't know if you recall that, but that's how we brought him in. We had Dr. Marx, who's presented. And some of you may have seen that he has been highlighted in the metro Detroit area from a lot of the diversity training that he's doing. We actually had him several years ago. Ms. Charles was heavily involved. And then we had Virginia Winters. We had a series. She would come and provide training to all our administrators from Wayne County RISA. And then we had some of our own, Ms. Shami, with Ms. Aldubeli, Mr. Matur, and others that were providing training within the district, some of the people that work directly for us. So, I'm going to turn this over to Felde Bailey.
Try to unmask. Good evening, President Thorpe and trustees. So, I will pick up kind of where the initiative picks up in 2016 and '17, and that was kind for us to cast a wider net, so to speak, and present to not just general admin, but more of our instructional staff and our staff that were in the buildings. And so, one of the more effective ways in 2016 and '17 that we thought would approach getting the word out to every building would be through our 3D community meetings. And those were three departments coming together four times a year, speak the same language, to learn the same things, and to be on the same page as far as some of the learning that we were doing in our different departments and bringing it together. We had our special ed resource teachers, our English language development specialists, our instructional coaches partnered with their administrators coming in. And for that year, what we focused on were cultural proficiency. Are we there yet? Getting to know your Arab students, my five values, what it means to be a refugee, and poverty training. And so, for example, when looking at getting to know your Arab students, we would talk about the Arab world, who we are and where we come from. And then, for example, we'd talk about some of the different behaviors and things that you might see that look different. For example, as a teacher, I might say, "I would like you to quietly, I'd like you to copy down your spelling words, and I would like you to do this quietly, please." To open the desk as a student, I grab a red crayon. I copy spelling list down. I turn it in. Teacher is frustrated. It's not written in pencil. The question is, why is this child doing this? Are they being defiant? Or why didn't he just ask for a pencil? The student is thinking, "Okay, I want to make sure that I get my list down, so I took the writing utensil that's available to me." So, the red crayon is all I had. I completed my task, and I didn't speak, therefore preventing him from asking. Both were right in what their assumptions were, and they're both valid in their perceptions, but the interpretation of that directive is different for both. 2017 and '18, Culture Responsive Teaching, Understanding Students Academically, Socially, and Culturally, Leading Children from Poverty. What looked different in 2017 and '18 is that we started, we continued our PDs that we were presenting in '16 and '17, but in '17 and '18, we offered it to not just our lead staff, support staff on leadership teams to take back to buildings, but we presented it to our young five kindergarten teachers. Some of these topics were addressed. We added a couple of our culturally responsive teaching that we were learning from Virginia Winters, mirrors and windows, and what it looks like to have people who look like us and to engage with people who look different than us in our educational experiences and make... our educational experiences, and make the relationships of both and the importance of both. 2018 and 19, we worked with the adult ed staff and presented some of that same information that you saw in the last two slides. Dearborn Teacher University became, we became a part of that rotation that instead of sit and get two days of PD at the beginning for our new teacher hires, they were getting monthly professional development. We provided this throughout that, throughout the year. We presented also for the Rotary Club. We've presented at the state level on some of this information, and different buildings started to invite us in to do some of this. But we weren't really getting everyone the way that we wanted to. And so, we wanted to continue to improve, and we knew that every staff member needs to do this. And we were bringing speakers in, and as great as some of our speakers were, we weren't always, we'd walk away saying, "Well, that doesn't happen in Dearborn. That doesn't apply to us," right? So, 1920, you see a continuation of expanding our presentations at different buildings, but not all, not as systematically as we'd like, and we had some outside speakers coming in. So, Mr. Assale will walk you through kind of what happens after 2020.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Al Du Bailey. She did a great job at kind of giving us a little bit of history of the past on the Equity Series. I'm going to talk a little bit about what currently presently we're doing right now, and hopefully what the future holds for us within the Equity Series. Currently this year, we kind of came together and we developed an Equity Series for general administrators. We're actually starting with general administrators, and hopefully we'll start trickling this down to the entire staff. We've started to do that in segments already, and I'll explain that a little bit later. The first presentation actually happened this past February with Ms. Al Du Bailey and her team. They spoke about micro and macro aggressions and what the impacts that has on our culture within our schools, you know, whether it's students, staff, so on and so forth. They did a really nice job explaining that, and there was a lot of rich conversation amongst the administrators, which was very helpful and beneficial. The following month in March, Mr. Mashur talked about teaching African-American boys. You know, the discussion was about teaching boys in Dearborn, and how our actions and words obviously impact all those around us, specifically African-American boys, and how it's so important all the time when we talk about expectations and sometimes our own biases, to kind of keep that out of there and, you know, remains kind of the course with everybody. Just this past Thursday, I actually had the honor and privilege to work with some of my team members, and we talked about special, people with disabilities and students with special needs, and, you know, how some of our biases sometimes may lower expectations for some of the students. You know, part of our theme was, and we had these real, you know, some of the special ed staff were wearing these real cool shirts that, "Look at the able and not the label." You know, look at things from a strengths perspective. You know, what are some of the things that our students with disabilities can do, that they can excel at, and that they're very, very good at, and build upon that, and just raise expectations, hopefully to continue and close some of the deficits. You know, and I kind of talked about the professional learning series. We actually already started to present some of the stuff we were doing in the Gen Admin Series this year to some of our staff. I know Ms. Al Du Bailey presented it to some of her ELD specialists. In addition to that, we also presented the micro and macro aggressions to our special education paraprofessionals as well in the district. And hopefully, we're going to continue to build upon that work. Next year, we're hoping to use some of our district professional development days, not only on some of this Equity Series, but also on trauma-informed instruction. And that's going to be my next point. I'm so, you know, happy to report that we now have in Dearborn Public Schools 90 certified presenters on trauma. And I can't tell you what a huge accomplishment that is. We worked very, very closely with Wayne RISA and their team to kind of get this through and get this initiative working. And I could tell you, they were extremely complimentary of our entire district. One, just to see how many people were getting trained. Secondly, just the great engagement and the rich conversation that our staff had within some of these trainings. So, we're extremely excited that next year, hopefully, there'll be a three-part series where everybody in the district, you know, both instructional and non-instructional, will receive some of the trauma-informed training, so we can, you know, finally achieve the goal of being a true trauma-informed district. And hopefully, we'll continue to be, to build upon that work as well, you know. And something that we want to make sure to do is, you know, whether it's the Equity Series or whether it's trauma, it's not just three days, you know, right? It's something that's consistent and ongoing, and these conversations are always happening within our schools. So, basically, that's kind of where, where I guess, you know, Dr. Malako kind of started with where we were or how this all started. Ms. Al Du Bailey gave you some paths, and then I'm just kind of letting you know currently where we are and what the future holds. That concludes our presentation. I don't know if there are any questions or comments.
I'll make, have one or two questions. Do we do these in person? And of course, I'm guessing for COVID, we've been more likely to do them by video. I'm used to my professional world where we have training videos that we have to watch, and we watch it whenever it's convenient for us, and we just have like a deadline to watch them by. Is that the type of way that we're thinking we're going to go with these for the district?
So, a lot of these trainings are actually done live, and because some of the most important parts of some of these trainings is just that interaction, that conversation they have amongst some of their pairs, you know, holding them live, whether it's through Zoom or, you know, hopefully one day eventually in person, that's probably how a lot of these trainings will go in the future.
Thanks. Trustee Watts.
Can you speak more about the Equity Series? Is this something that you guys created amongst yourselves, or is this like a national platform in which, how did this some kind of morph?
So, actually, some of the Equity Series, and, you know, I'll let Dr. Malako talk a little bit about the past, but for this year, I could tell you, a lot of it started in our cabinet meetings, just having some of these rich discussions on some of the things that possibly we were seeing. And this was just really a lot of great minds within our cabinet just kind of coming together. And I could tell you, I know Ms. Ali Bazey's here. She was very instrumental in a lot of this. And also, Ms. Al Du Bailey, you know, extremely, you know, bright mind, just talking about some of this stuff and, you know, really making it happen, which obviously, under Dr. Malako's leadership, wasn't possible. So, we're very, very excited about that.
So, that, I mean, this is phenomenal. And, I mean, to hear that we have 90 certified presenters on trauma.
Yes.
To be able to have that with our kids coming back into school. I mean, that is invaluable to have so many eyes to be able to recognize trauma and to build that resiliency in our children. So, that's wonderful to hear. And with this Equity Series, is this something that, I know you said, you said right now it's at the admin level, correct? Is this something that you can then pass, so I'm hearing that's going to be then given to staff and then kind of down to the students? So, it's adaptable, not only just to the admin, but then also to the staff and the students? Is this something that, as a school board, we can see some of these presentations, or, I mean, is this something that can apply to the school board as well?
Absolutely. I mean, we can definitely, we'll be more than happy, and I'll work with Dr. Malako to see how we want to handle that, whether, you know, we can possibly invite you to some of the trainings in the future, or if Dr. Malako wants to do special trainings for the board.
Yeah, I mean, this past week, I had attended virtually the National School Association Board Virtual Annual Meeting, and there was, I had attended the Equity Symposium also in February. So, a lot of the topics in which you're discussing, in terms of courageous conversations about race and culture, I think it's timely in terms of a lot of the conversations that we're having nationally. So, it's nice to be able to see that at the local level as well. So, thank you for all that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I could just add, we can work with the board to see who may be interested in being involved. I will say, I know the board is aware, society trustees have been on the board for a while, of our professional learning community model and how we plan. And you might remember, I, we do pre-COVID. Right now, it's virtual, but, you know, a retreat every year. I'd have with exec, a lot of that idea brainstorming came out of getting off location, you know, discussing ideas, and our team kept bringing back that we needed this, and it was something I was supporting. So, all those sessions and the meetings that we have do pay dividends, because you come up with ideas that are aligned with the strategic plan, other things that we need to do for our students. So, appreciate the team for continuing to stay on it. And I think Rose, and I think it was Mason, and at the time it was Mike, and Danine said, "We need to do this every month and have, you know, a real long-term series." And so, we brought it back to the full, extended cabinet at the retreat, and everyone agreed, and so we prioritized this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just one more thing that I'd like to add to that. If, we can also have more relatable cultural, culturally relatable curriculum as well, books that involve Arabic and Islamic culture. I, when I was a student, there was only two pages, three pages in the history books. What I think is very valuable, especially to our population, to add that. Thank you.